Good evening. I'm going to call this meeting of the Gloucester School Committee to order. It's April 14, 2021, and this meeting is recorded by video and audio in accordance with the state open meeting law, consistent with the governor's orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law and banning gatherings of more than 10 people. This meeting will be conducted by remote participation. If you're calling in on a phone, you can press star nine to request to speak. If you are watching on a computer or device, there is a raise hand button, and you can tap or press the request to speak button to request to speak. Please use either of these options during oral communications to be recognized to speak. We are going to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing negotiations strategy with GTA, with Gape, and I believe Food Service. We will come back into public session around 7:00. If we finish our executive session before that, we will recess until 7:00. We will not start the public session before 7:00. It's conceivable that we may run a few minutes over, but we will then immediately go into the public session. So Maria, could we have a roll call vote for attendance?
Ms. Weason.
Here.
Kathy Clancy.
Here.
Mr. Favazza.
Here.
Chairman Pope.
Here.
Ms. Prince.
Here.
Mayor Taken.
Here.
And Ms. Watson.
Here.
Thank you very much. Everybody is present. I'm going to make a motion to meet an executive session pursuant with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21, for the following purpose: As an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the beginning, the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and to return to open session where we will commence with our regular business meeting. So we are going for purpose three, and we for discussion collective bargaining with the GTA, with Gape, and Food Service, and ISO move.
Second.
Okay. Maria, could we have a roll call vote?
Ms. Weason.
Yes.
Kathy Clancy.
Yes.
Mr. Favazza.
Yes.
Chairman Pope.
Yes.
Ms. Prince.
Yes.
Mayor Taken.
Yes.
And Ms. Watson.
Yes.
Okay, it carries unanimously. We will be going into executive session. I'm going to apologize. I'm functioning with just one computer tonight, and it takes me longer to jump from one to the next that way. I'll see you soon. I'm going to call this meeting of the Gloucester School Committee back into regular session. I'm going to repeat our call to order, which is this meeting is recorded by video and audio in accordance with the state open meeting law, consistent with the governor's orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law and banning gatherings of more than 10 people. This meeting will be conducted by remote participation. If you're calling in on a phone, you can press star nine to request to speak. If you're watching on a computer or a device, there is a raise hand button that you can tap or press to request to speak. Please use either of these options during oral communications to be recognized to speak. We are just coming back from executive session, and I will remind everybody that the mission of Gloucester Public Schools is for all students to be successful, engaged, lifelong learners, and I will, we will move on in the agenda to oral communications. So if I get here. Oral communications, the public shall have the opportunity at every regular school committee meeting to be heard under oral communications. Oral communication shall allow any resident who has a request or complaint of any nature relative to the school committee business to appear before the school committee, state their problem without debate, and the matter may be referred to the proper subcommittee. For items that are on the agenda, members of the public may address the committee with the permission of the chair. Persons speaking under oral communication shall be limited to three minutes each, and shall submit a copy of their prepared communication to the recording secretary. The school committee chair shall not allow complaints as to individual performance or character. All right, with that being said, I'm going to open oral communications, and I'm going to have to be able to see people. So if there's anybody here who'd like to address the school committee under oral communications, raise your hand, and I will recognize you. Okay, Mary Ann, welcome back.
Thank you, Mary Ann Albert Boucher, 93 Mont Pleasant Avenue. I would like to recognize Beth Goldberg and the Remote Academy. She is the specialist for the Remote Academy, and I don't know if any of you have heard the two virtual, I don't even know what you'd call them, song events that she has done with some of the fourth and fifth graders after school. These children met after school on Thursdays, and there have now been two of them, and they are beautiful. And if you haven't heard them, I highly recommend that you do. It is quite something. So I just want to recognize her for that, because I know she put a lot of effort into it, and I know the children put a lot of effort into it, and we don't hear too much about Remote Academy, and it's amazing. It actually brought some real tears to my eyes, so I highly recommend it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Is there anybody else who'd like to address the school committee? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on in the agenda, and the next item is comments from the chair person. And I would like to take this opportunity to reiterate what I said before the last election is that this will be my last term. I will not be running for school committee in November, and I would encourage people to consider being public servants and taking out papers, and it's a very rewarding, although sometimes difficult job, but it's definitely worth it, and I hope people follow through on that. Recognitions. Okay, well, I would like to, under our, go ahead, Joel, I'm sorry.
Oh, thanks. I just want to obviously recognize everyone making the transition to full days at the elementary schools, especially the lunch staff, food services staff. Obviously, it's been a breakfast and lunch situation like no other, and the anecdotal reports I'm hearing from both staff and from parents is that they're nailing it. So just, you know, congratulations to them, and thank you very much.
Thank you. I would just, under our consent agenda tonight, there's a number of businesses that have donated to that effort by paying for tents for a week, so that there's shelter for students to eat lunch, which is one of the big problems that we had, and it has been solved. And I'd also like to recognize Joel Favazza, who sort of spearheaded that effort to get community participation in the renting of tents. So thank you, Joel, and thank you to the businesses that have contributed. Any other recognitions? Okay, then we will move on to our Student Advisory Council, and I saw Megan.
Hi, guys.
There she is.
I'm going to start off by saying, which I'm very excited to say, that we will be having a prom this year. It's going to be an outdoor prom on June 18. Even though we will have a prom, we're going to ensure that it'll be a safe event within the parameters set by the state, and due to the limited number of people in an outdoor gathering, it'll be a seniors-only prom, which means no underclassmen and no other guests from other schools. And the original date was the June 4th, but we didn't want to have any potential close contacts affecting anyone's ability to graduate on Sunday, the 13th, so it was moved to Friday, the 18th, with the rain date being the 19th. And with that being said, we will be having a promenade, and though the family and friends will not be able to be in the field house, students will still be walking, and then we'll do a virtual showing like they did for NHS, and you know, like we're doing today, with a photographer there to capture the moments. And graduation will be Sunday, June 13th, at 1:13. Our scholarship night will be Friday, June 11th, and like I said, just like NHS, students will be in person, but the parents can view from home, safe distance. The school voted for homecoming king and queen. Weather permitting, the crowning will be at the football game this Friday. News from the Drama Club, the DHS Theater Program has started filming for High School Musical Junior today in various locations all around the school, and the show premieres on Thursday, May 20, and the tickets are available for a virtual showing on Gloucester High Drama.blogspot.com. NHS, they've been doing great with their hours, and they are due tomorrow. And then news from the class of 2023, they're doing another drive-in and drop-off shoe drive, which will be on May 15 from 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM, and they're collecting any and all sneakers, as long as there are no holes and no other damages. And that's all I got.
Laura, you have a question?
Yes, will you just repeat the web address where people can buy the tickets for High School Musical?
It is Gloucester High Drama, all one word, dot Blogspot.com.
Great. I want to put that out there. Thank you.
Joel?
Thanks. So just to clarify two points, Megan, can you, where is the outdoor prom being held?
From my knowledge, it'll be at DHS on Field, and we'll be getting tents in a dance floor.
Awesome. And then the second is, just for clarification, it sounds like a really great place, I'm sorry, a really great case of lemonade from lemons. The High School Musical, which is High School Musical, the musical, instead of having to build a set in a high school of a high school, is instead using the fact that it's in a high school and actually using real rooms within, across the campus for various scenes. Is that correct?
That is correct, and it's very cool to see. They've done a bunch of behind-the-scenes stuff, and a lot of the kids are then posting on their personal social medias, and it's just really cool to see that, you know, our school's being used for this production. So yes, that is correct. They are filming cafeteria, classrooms, anywhere and everywhere that they can use to not only save money, but just an experience to use the stuff that we have available.
I think it's great.
Kathy?
Yeah, I wanted to follow on, Joel. The news that you're having a prom is just, it makes me so happy that you and your class have been so positive at a time when it probably can be pretty disheartening. So good for you, and I'm happy you're going to make it all work.
Yeah, I mean, it's not what we were expecting, but it's better than nothing, and we have to make the best of it. We're very thankful for the school for, you know, allowing us for this.
Super. That's great.
Anything else? Well, thank you, Megan, and good luck, and we'll see you soon.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Megan.
Thanks. Okay, let me find my agenda. Consent agenda. Do we have a motion to, are there any items on the consent agenda that anybody would like to be removed for further discussion?
I approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, Maria, could we have a roll call vote?
Ms. Weason.
Yes.
Kathy Clancy.
Yes.
Mr. Favazza.
Yes.
Chairman Pope.
Yes.
Ms. Prince.
Yes.
Mayor Taken.
Yes.
And Ms. Watson.
Yes.
It passes unanimously, and we'll move on to deliberations on educational issues, and I'll hand it off to Superintendent Lomis.
Great. Am I muted? No. All right, so just bear with me. I have a presentation already, and then I switched screens, and of course, it disappeared. So that's what happens sometimes. Hold on, sorry. One second. All right, back at it. Sorry for the technical difficulties. So a few items today. First of all, I do want to also piggyback on the acknowledgement by Mr. Favazza about getting back into the regular school day at the elementary schools. Great and big step. Spoke to our parent leaders group this morning, and they shared that their kids, this is K to five, obviously, very happy, happy to see their friends, happy to have recess. They were tired, this is the kids, last week, definitely going to full school day. Teacher, I think, retired too, but we made it through the week, and it's nice to see so unmasked faces at lunchtime, and then kids running around with lots of energy of recess. And again, it's challenging. So far, weather has cooperated for the most part. I mean, it would have been nice to have the like 10 degrees warmer in terms of those schools that are having outdoor lunches and breakfasts. A little concerned about Friday, but folks are really handling it very well, you know. That's one of the biggest changes, but it's going really well, and it's just a testament to how folks in Gloucester just work hard, get things, work together, and get things done. And so it's just another example of what we've seen all year long. So really, really appreciate that. I'm going to give a, so we'll have a COVID update quickly from me, and then James, Principal Cook is here. We'll give an update on the work that the high school's been doing to try to get more kids in for regular school day, and he'll also may give an update on some of the events that are happening, but Megan just did most of that, so he may not have to do that, because she did a great job. I'll give a budget update, and then a quick update on my evaluation process and timeline. So let me keep moving here. COVID update, a lot of good news in terms of COVID. So we met last three weeks ago, and at that point, there were 70 active cases across the city. That went up to about 90 later that week, I think it was, and now we've been steadily dropping across the city, really for the last five days, probably, and are down to 43. So that's a really big improvement. Another big improvement is where we are. We've had 18 new cases since our last committee meeting, which was three weeks ago, but only two new cases since a week ago. We have only five active cases. I'll show you the school-by-school breakdown in a moment. You'll remember that when we met three weeks ago, we were very concerned about O'Malley. O'Malley was at its highest point, okay, and we said, you know, got to watch that closely. It's down to, well, I think we'll see, I think maybe one case for O'Malley. So that really was the high point of O'Malley, that sort of that same day we had our last committee meeting, and since then, it's been dropping steadily, which is great news. The other COVID testing results, so you can see, and these are all, you know, since we began, just after February vacation. This is like, this is the whole span between February vacation and April vacation. Just about 1,100 total tests at the high school, only two positive tests in the whole time, which is fantastic. I mean, it's remarkable. None of us quite knew what we would see there. And then O'Malley, 1,300, more than 1,300 tests, 182 pulls, and only one positive test there. So the, you know, we still haven't gotten more folks, the enrollment in that, the participation that has been steady over the last three, four weeks, really. So and we've tried a bunch of things, having no luck, basically, but you know, it's still, it's a good sample in any given week of the school, a pretty good sample, especially at O'Malley, and we're not finding a lot of positives. So that's really great news. Here are the total active cases. So you see two at Gloucester High School, one at O'Malley, and two at East Gloucester, you know, and I think one of those East Gloucester ones will come off pretty soon. So we're doing really well. They're doing very, very well across all schools. So that's really good news, really good to see. SAP, we did a SAP vaccination survey over the past week here, asked two basic questions. One was, you know, essentially, have you gotten vaccinated question. We had a few options there. One, are you fully vaccinated? Have you had your first dose? Fully vaccinated, of course, meaning you've had two doses of Moderna or Pfizer, or one of J. Johnson and Johnson. And you see 75% of staff are fully vaccinated already, and 18% have already had their first doses, which, you know, which will mean then, you know, sometime in the next two weeks or so, probably, you know, really much right after vacation, we'll have upwards of 93% of our staff fully vaccinated. And we asked this across all staff. It wasn't just teachers, it wasn't just, you know, professionals. We asked everybody. We did not ask what school, we didn't ask what role you had. We want it to be very anonymous, because in terms of, you know, because we figured that would lend, you know, to more people participating. And as you can see, that's a really, really high number of folks participating. That's great. And then the remaining percentage of that, that adds up to 93%, obviously, is a combination of a few folks who have their first doses scheduled now, and then a few folks who will get vaccinated but haven't scheduled yet. And when I say a few, I mean, single digits, I mean, very few. And then the last case was that folks who have chosen not to get vaccinated for medical, personal, or religious reasons. And that, again, is in the area of like 2% or 3%, so very, very low. But, you know, that number, 93%, I just, you know, one of the reasons we did this survey was folks asked us to, first of all, because it just wanted to know. But my intention and my hope is that it'll give our community a lot of confidence that our staff have been taking care of themselves, and by doing that, taking care of our school communities. And certainly, just a great, great job by our staff to jump on it, do what they had to do. The next question was just asking, they just had a curiosity, just in understanding sort of what our folks have done or have sort of experienced while trying to get a vaccination. So you see the top one there is 35% of folks who answered this question said that scheduling a vaccination point was difficult. And then, interestingly enough, the highest one here, at 55%, so the third bar from the top, was I was able to schedule and receive a vaccine with little problem. So that's nice to hear, that, you know, more than half, or half of folks had little difficulty with that, you know, which is, it's an important step. And then it's about convenience-wise, that second bar from the top, about 19% of folks had to drive 45 minutes or more to get to their location to get a vaccine. And then we had about 45% of folks scheduled to, you know, were able to schedule outside of the school hours, outside of work hours, you know. I don't have any comparisons on that in terms of other, you know, work or businesses, that sort of thing. It has been a challenge. I mean, obviously, as folks read the paper, you know, some folks are getting, you know, after effects or side effects from actually having the vaccination, you know, temporary side effects. Those, maybe someone understands rhyme or reason about who gets those, who doesn't get those. So it's been challenging over the last few weeks, really a couple of weeks, to have, because staff have had to been out after they get the second, or after they get shot. And so that's been challenging staffing or buildings, but that's made it a little more difficult, in some ways, very difficult. But we think we're working through that, just because, as you can see, you know, 73%, I think it is, or 25% are already vaccinated fully. So, but that's just, that's, you know, that's why, you know, people need to take care of themselves, and that's been important as they sort of work through the process. But again, our staff has done a great, great job on that. Really happy to see that. I'm going to stop now and hand it over to James, and he's going to give us an update on just what the high school's doing. Oh, I'm sorry, some questions, maybe.
Laura?
Thank you. Just two pretty quick ones, I think. One, as far as not being able to improve the numbers on the pool testing, do you have a sense of like what the resistance is and how we can continue, you know, to encourage people to participate?
I do not know at this point. We have tried a lot of things, that, you know, students stand up and direct appeals to families, and even when, you know, we had some cases in the high school or O'Malley, we appealed them there. I don't really know, honestly, and it's a challenge other folks are having. Some districts have, you know, they're just, they've required it, especially among staff. So, you know, we didn't, we haven't discussed that with the union, with the Teachers Union or Gape, you know, so maybe that's a route to go. But no, we are really flummoxed by it, very honestly.
Okay. And my second question is related to April vacation and staff and students potentially traveling. Are there any protocols related to out-of-state travel for staff and for students who return next, you know, the week after April break?
Yep. So there, all the protocols remain in place for the state, I mean, the state's one of the, but they're all advisory now, instead of being, you know, required or expected. So those are only advisory at this point. We'll remind our folks before people go off about that advisory, but, um, you know, there isn't really any at this point, you know, and that's where the state is in terms of guiding, guiding, you know, the state community. But we'll remind folks, you know, to please be safe and take care of themselves, therefore, take care of others. But we're sort of, you know, that's really changed at the state level.
Okay. Is there an expectation of a rise in cases after that from the public health folks?
I wouldn't, I don't know, and I'm not sure anyone knows, because of vaccinations, you know, accelerate here, you know, there was concern about variants and those increasing, but now we're seeing a decrease, especially locally. So I haven't talked to Karen Carroll about that specifically, but I think it's my, this is uninformed opinion, okay? But we are certainly in a very different place than we were in all other previous vacations. I mean, there really is, so I don't, I don't know. I think we all knew what to expect last time. I don't know personally what to expect this time, or I don't know.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, Kathy?
Yeah, I have a quick question on your percent that you're using. So when you said 75% of staff, are you saying 75% of all staff or the respondents to this?
Yeah, thank you. 75% of respondents. Yeah, yeah. And I mean, I think this probably, that's held, you know, from early returns, like when we had 50% 50 people responding, and then 100, and 150, that's held very, very steady. So I think it's fair to extrapolate.
Yeah, no, it's great news.
Yep. Thanks for the clarification, though.
Samantha?
Just to follow up on Laura's question in relation to travel. Anecdotally, I know a lot more people who are getting on planes this vacation than previous vacations. So even if the numbers are lower around here, it's still very concerning that these are just advisories and not requirements. So just to be clear, people do not need to provide a negative test to be, if they've been out of the state, to come back to school.
Right. That's right. Yeah.
Okay. So they can just come home on Sunday, get off the plane, and jump right back into our schools?
That's what the state is saying. And we've never been able to, you know, we've never been able to enforce that in a real way. You know, we've been, you know, suggesting, asking, requesting, you know, being nice, you know, being forceful, but we've never had, we've never been able to do that. So, but I will, listen, I will say this, as I think everyone's experienced, we'll watch it all very, very closely, you know. We will, I get, literally, I get a text or a call from, you know, our nurse leader every time there's a case, like within minutes of us knowing about it, you know. So I can't, I don't know if we ever really try to explain like how close we, I think we have, how closely we watch it, but it literally is every single time, you know, and And, and, and so, and we still have all um our options at our disposal, whether that's. Um, you know, mobile testing or whether that's uh just shutting down a classroom or a grade or a school, those all stand up, but um. You know, I'm hopeful. Um, and I think the general sense is that. Uh, you know, we're on a pretty good path here, knock on wood. Um, things change, but um especially with more and more. Uh, vaccinations in, in adult population, um, you know, and, and uh that we're gonna be in good shape. No. Yeah.
Any other questions on COVID? Well, then, is it gonna be James or, or you Ben?
Yeah.
Thank you, Jonathan. Thanks, Ben, for tuning me up for this. So um. You heard a little bit from Megan earlier tonight. I'm going to repeat some of what Megan said. Um, Megan and I did talk beforehand as well about things and. And I will. Say that while, when the meeting started, the um high school musical filming was happening outside this window. And I was thinking, am I gonna, are we gonna have some noise problems during the meeting in a few minutes like? Uh, but they wrapped up filming, took the equipment and headed off. It was a very efficient endeavor, but they were. Uh, it was, it was really great to watch them uh do some filming this afternoon. And I'm excited that you all will be able to, to see the fruits of those labors shortly. It's gonna be great. Um, so uh tonight I'm here uh to, to talk with folks about the um, we've explored several options. So um although the state has not provided um any guidance for high schools about. Um, coming back in uh in person, the way they have for the elementary schools and the middle school. Uh concurrently with all of that work, we've designed many plans and have taken a look at, at, at the various options. As my colleagues and the other schools have been doing the same. Um, we also had Ben, Greg and I had an opportunity to share some of these ideas and plans. Uh, partway through the process with some folks from DSE, uh which is a great audience uh to have. And, and they had many questions and, and I'll talk a little bit about that as we go. And then just to remind folks that in considering the different options all the time, we were mindful of the primary objective for the year. Which is of course the safe return of as many students as possible to in-person settings. To maximize learning, address students' full needs and support family and community needs at the same time. So we kept the same focus we've had, you know, from July uh last year um in mind as we did this work. So up to this point, as, as you know, we've been able to have our students in for partial days, four days per week since October. Uh, none of the other schools in the Northeastern Conference, uh, you know, the larger schools on the North Shore have been able to do that. They've been out for a week here, week there, they got started later than we did or various ways. So I'm very proud of, of what the, the staff here has been able to do and what the community has been able to do and the support we've had from the school committee in doing that. So in doing that, we also were able to maintain our, pretty close to our full programming, right, the, the full offering. So, you know, we've had four seasons of athletics, which is actually an extra season, right, by the end of this. Uh, for, um, football is a little interesting in, in springtime. So it's, it's a little disorienting uh when I left school and went over uh to the last game. It was great to hear those sounds. Um, we've had two theatrical performances or will have had two theatrical performances. We've had, been able to do things from, you know, our engineering lab uh to band, to the Gilnetter, to the auto shop. Uh, twelve AP classes as well as uh, you know, twelve advanced uh placement classes, as well as advanced manufacturing classes. And running a remote academy for eighteen percent of our students who need, who need that um as well. And we've had various variations of the remote academy to accommodate students. So what we're now looking to be able to do here um for the, um, in the fourth quarter of the year. Is we will be adding in-person Fridays beginning May fourth. So each Friday will look a little different because of MCAS testing and the need to rotate cohorts. So I'll be sharing the, the, this excruciating details with families starting tomorrow. I shared them with the staff yesterday and sharing with you folks tonight as well as our, our audience here tonight. Um, so each Friday will look a little different because of the cohorts and because of MCAS testing. Um, expanding into the Fridays is really gonna mitigate the effect of MCAS testing on the other students. We'll be able to recoup the learning lost uh because of the numbers of students who are testing with MCAS and because of our need to maintain distance. Um, only testing students will be able to be in the building. A lot of schools do that. Uh, Ben and I were just talking about this earlier this afternoon. A lot of schools have to do this every year. Having, when students take the MCAS, the other students are not in the building. We usually have both happen at the same time, but this year. Uh, we'll have uh students test, taking the MCAS, the other students will be learning remotely. But then on Fridays, we'll be able to make up for the learning lost. Um, I've shared details, uh, like I said, with the faculty and then I'll be sharing details with families tomorrow after sharing with you folks tonight. So that's what our Fridays will look like uh from uh May fourth through the end of the year. Um, with some in-person learning that'll look different each time. Uh, seniors will be able to end their high school careers by being in-person for full days from May tenth. Through their end, May twenty-eighth. And there are several reasons we can do this. One is the size of the senior class is. Is fairly small this year. Um, smaller even with um a larger number of seniors than other classes are remote. So we'll be able to do that without um going over the three-person minimum. Uh, it's sorry, the three-foot minimum in each of the classes. It, it does push us over in a few classes over the course of a day, but we're able to accommodate those. In a way that we wouldn't by bringing in all the students. Um, it, it's gonna provide some more in-person time for seniors to meet their graduation requirements. Those who, you know, need to uh catch up, still have work to do to pass their classes for graduation. And it's gonna allow for some uh extra in-person time for students preparing for the AP tests. Especially the math and the science, which are at the end of the month um for those AP classes that, that our seniors are taking. So all this is really exciting to us that we can offer some kind of normalcy in, in a sense for seniors over the last three weeks and address some needs. Um, with our seniors, um, folks who won't have another opportunity to um resume. You know, uh more in-person learning in, in the fall and will be heading off to bigger and better things. Um, I do wanna share that the seniors themselves have, um, you know, and talking with them as excited as many of them are about the opportunity. Um, have some concerns that are, I think are worth sharing. Um, and those include, and, and I'm framing these in terms of like communicating with the public. So this, some seniors are concerned about their peers not following guidelines at this point. Right? Getting lax in the spring and so on. And, and they did ask me to share that tonight with folks. So I'm really appealing to all of us as leaders in the community to do what we can to make sure that. That, that our teenagers, including the two that I have at home, are doing everything they can to be safe. And still following the guidelines that we do during the school day and following the, following those outside of the school day. Um, is soup, is going to be incredibly important uh to make this work. Um, and we believe we can do it and, and I wanna be able to, you know, bring that back to the seniors. And then, you know, there are concerns the seniors have about, you know, their senioritis as happens every year. And, you know, folk, students not wanting to attend and that sort of thing. But that's a perennial concern. In April, May of any school year. So, uh, but that is another concern that the students, uh, you know, student attendance during that. But again, these two things are things that as leaders, we will do everything in, in our power that seniors are able to maximize this time. Being able to be with, with each other, with, with all of their peers without having to um. Go over the, the three-foot limit in classrooms uh at any time. Um, and also um dealing with uh making sure folks are doing, we're doing everything in school. In school activities, but also outside of school to observe the guidelines to keep each other safe. That's going to be really important. Because we wanna have the celebrations that Megan mentioned earlier, including our scholarship night on June eleventh, which will be in-person for students. And uh similar to the NHS ceremony streamed for others, uh our in-person graduation on Sunday, the thirteenth. Um, we'll be able to do it in person, uh very similar to what we did last summer uh with a, a limit of guests similar to last summer. Uh, but having some guests in person for families. And then um ending uh the seniors' time with us with that uh outdoor co-horted prom. Uh, right here on our school grounds in tents on Friday, June eighteenth with a rain date of uh Saturday, June nineteenth. So in order to make all those things happen, we really do need the support of the community to keep each other safe for the seniors. There's a third group of students that we're, we're thinking about at this time and that's. We are already creating expanded in-person learning opportunities for identified students. Um, who need uh some more in-person time to stay on track for their graduation requirements. So again, as has been the spirit all along with really helping our high-needs students with our remote engagement center. And other in-person opportunities, we're expanding some of those opportunities as well for um students in need who can. Uh, in need of some support staying on track for graduation requirements. So those are our three um uh plans, uh parts of our plan to expand some in-person learning, but doing so safely. Uh, before answering questions, I, I just wanna share a little bit about uh some of the obstacles we faced. Um, and, and not just that we observed, but that DSE also observed when we shared some of our situation with them. Obstacles in, 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 in any kind of expanding beyond what, what we're able to do safely. Um, chief among those is our, our, our class sizes. So approximately twenty percent of our course sections exceed the room capacity at three feet. Um, every block of the day, uh twenty percent of our courses exceed the room capacity, three feet distant. As part of this work, something I, I didn't know as somebody who's worked in this district for more than twenty years, is that. Schools with uh more modern uh rooms, they're able to accommodate twenty-four students at three feet. Uh, in most cases, and sometimes more in larger classrooms. Our classrooms just aren't, aren't, aren't big enough to um go beyond sixteen. Um, in most of our sections and twenty in some. So our rooms are smaller, as well as our hallways are narrower than, than other schools' hallways. More modern schools. Um, lunch is another obstacle. We've uh made plans, um looked at what we can do to reduce lunch time, adding extra lunch, lunch sessions. Increasing supervision to the extent possible, using the field house potentially as the second space for lunch. Uh, with a protective flooring uh added uh to make that possible with our, our brand-new floor. Um, and still, um, it's not possible to, for us to run a, a school day with any less than. Um, more, a hundred-plus students in each of our eating spaces. Um, of course, without masks at six feet for a lunchtime. For seniors, uh we are able to offer an open campus with some students opting in. To stay into the space that we do have for lunch. To bring all our students back would be hundreds of students unmasked within the spaces that we have. And of course, um, you know, that raises concerns of, uh, the health concerns that we've been um concerned about. That the smaller schools with the tents they're able to fit into, um, co-horted students in tents and so on. Um, we wouldn't be able to, we're not able to do that at the high school, although we did, of course, explore the tent option as well. Of, of less concern, but, but still a concern are the course changes. And this was something that really came up in our meeting with DSE. In order to maintain the full range of our course offerings through the pandemic. Our schedule has seven class changes, which is thirty-five minutes of, of time that students are changing classes. Um, we added some time for the one-way hallways to allow students to get where they need to go following the one-ways. Um, during each change, the students would be entering those crowded hallways. Um, in which even the one-way markings that we use, we use every day quite effectively. Even with those, uh, students would not be able to maintain uh three, three feet of distance from each other as they move. Um, and then within that thirty-five minutes, we would be creating some additional close contacts. Among the students who tend to move from class to class together over the course of the day. Um, and that was something that was actually pointed out in, in one of our meetings. Uh, all of these factors also contribute to something that is, I think, worth bringing up. Because it, it, it's, I can share with you some of the struggles that, you know, families have had through COVID. Um, one that might go um on less noticed. Um, all of these factors would also contribute to greatly increasing the possibility of close contacts during the school day. Um, and therefore increasing the amount of learning lost to students. So a, a review of our contact tracing suggests that in our co-horted model and with just adding the seniors. Um, when a student is in school while positive, right, if a student finds out because they're tested or they're symptomatic a day later. That we have to then trace two days prior. Um, generally, over the course of a single day, from that one student, there'll be ten or so close contacts. If we were to expand to all seven blocks and to all students in the building, those close contacts would now go up to twenty to thirty students. And each of those students would be missing a week or so of in-person learning during that. So by sticking with, you know, a, adding the seniors back in. Um, we can keep to um the sort of uh level of close contacts we've had when we have had in-person. You know, had to have had students in the positive during the year. So that's another consideration that we ran some simulations to see what that would look like. If bringing back more students. So as I'm sure you could tell from the presentation, we've looked at, you know, literally, uh, you know, more than a dozen different variations. On the different things we might be able to do. And what we've decided upon is, is what uh we can do safely and confidently. To maximize students' uh learning and, and their safety through the rest of the year.
Thank you, James. Any questions? Kathy?
I just wanna make sure I understand the Fridays for, um, as you mentioned, MCAS. So are you saying? The students that go in on Friday will only be those students taking MCAS? Is that, okay, so help me understand that a little?
Sure, yeah. It's, it's very complicated, Kathy. So I, I think I got it, because I've explained it a few times. So there are six Fridays that we're talking about. Three of them are going to be um a regular co-horted day, right? One group in the morning, the other group after. So three of them will be just an added day. On three other days, we'll have MCAS testing in the morning part. Of the day with just the tenth graders for four of the days and just the ninth graders for the two they need to do. And then we'll be bringing in one of the cohorts in the afternoon, right? Whichever cohort lost some learning earlier in the week because of other MCAS testing we have to do. We'll be bringing that group back in at the end of the week to make up for what they lost.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Did I do okay?
Yeah.
Oh, my gosh. It took, it's taken me a while to boil it down. Ben knows, because he's heard the other versions.
Already explained it to me three times. Okay, I finally got it. Okay. Yeah. Thank you, James. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, James. Um, thank you for your hard work. I know this is like a puzzle, trying to put it together and we're getting there. By the time we get there, school will be over and we'll be back to normal, hopefully. Um, my question is, do we have a lot of students asking to stay remote because of their concerns about. Closer contacts now and how are we able to um provide those services to those students?
Yeah. Yeah, that's a great, really good question. Um, by bringing back in the seniors, uh, just the seniors. Uh, we're not going to, our, our, um, it, it's not going to make. We believe it, maybe we might have some students asking to be remote, right, based on this increase. But we're not going to have a, a large move of students as we would if we were bringing back. You know, more students in person all day and having lunch, right? So we are always able to, um, though it's difficult, we are able to accommodate moves that have to happen into the remote academy. Um, it, it takes, we've been doing that all year. Mostly, we're bringing kids back in. Still, right? Mostly, we're giving them credit for whatever progress they've made in the remote academy and getting them started in, in person. And that's still the net, the net gain is, is coming in. Since the beginning of the second semester, we had some net loss of students, as you might imagine, back in January. Right? As those, those situations were uh taking place and we didn't have vaccines yet and so on. But in the second semester, we've had a net of bringing students back in and we try to accommodate both moves as quickly as we can. Um, because we understand people's situation change and they may need to be remote.
And just to follow up, so that crazy schedule that we now understand. We, Gloucester High School will be in compliance with what DSE is asking for all high school students to be back in school.
So, so um the commissioner announced today that after April break, he would announce those sorts of things.
Okay.
We don't know what they're gonna be yet.
Okay.
And it's a little preposterous that. And it's a little preposterous that they would do this at this time and then have high schools, as you know, the most complex organizations imaginable. You know, to try a shift based on those guidelines. So they also did say that they're gonna I mean, they, he said that, you know, there'll be waivers and that sort of thing as well. So we don't really quite know yet what they're going to expect of us. But, uh, you know, what, what's likely to happen is, you know, as they would have done for K to eight is, you know, come out and look at our, our anybody's, you know, anyone who, who was limited like we are and look at the physical plant to understand what the limitations are. And we obviously various, James has said, after a lot of, you know, you know, analysis and investigation that we are just really hampered by the size of our classrooms at the high school on this particular area, you know, typically we're not. They're fine, but so we'll work with them depending on what they come out with, but we don't expect anything until after April break. In terms of, in terms of specifics.
Thank you.
And then, as I said before, we have planned for various things Desi might say to us. And that's, you know, that's why we've, we've done, you know, a lot of various kinds of planning to be ready for what they ask, though, as I've said, this is what we think is the safest and best for our school community right now and to get the most students in.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions? James, I'm just curious. How are you going to do the MCAS for remote students?
That's a really great question. The, unlike at other grade levels, there isn't, as far as I know, unless something changed today, Ben, a provision for remote testing at the high school level because it is high stakes. So what we're doing is we're really trying to create situations where the remote students will come in. Right? So in other words, very like, like a, like an entrance where they can just come in, go right to the room, they're at six feet or more. They don't move over the course of the day. Right? They're, they're at six feet or more with it's an entrance that doesn't have to be with the other people. And we've had some success with that. We actually have some students who are coming in for tutoring and that kind of thing in the remote academy. Benefiting from some in-person learning either during the school day in our bridge program or after school with the tutors we've been able to set up with S R funds. And, but they don't, they're not shifting classes. They're not ever within six feet of anyone. So we will be inviting the remote academy folks in person and some of them may not decide to come. But we will be making it as enticing a proposition as possible for them to, to, you know, the safest possible offering to the remote academy students to come in.
Are we gonna still be? I don't know what the right word is, but
Held accountable for their
accountable for the students that don't choose not to take it?
The early, it's been a little while since I looked closely at the commissioner's guidance, but the most recent time I did is that, that attendance would not would not be counting against the schools, the attendance portion.
Thank you.
A quick question. For me and for the audience. Are the requirements for graduation for this year's juniors suspended for the MCAS? Yes, okay.
Yes, they
Yeah, I thought they were. I just wanted to
They were now. Yeah, there are decisions that some of us parents will need to make, however, about whether parents of juniors can choose to have their students test either this spring or next fall to qualify for the Adams and Koplick scholarships. Because they haven't changed that as a requirement for those scholarships. So some of us will need to make those decisions to whether, you know, our beleaguered juniors will be testing in May or in next fall. So that will be coming out to parents before the end of the week. So folks have some time to make, make that decision, an informed decision.
Sure, thank you.
Anything else before we move on? Okay, Ben, budget?
James, before you go, I just want to, you know, thank you and your team. I mean, you know, on some levels. I mean, we, I think we all want, you know, all our kids be back into regular school day. I know that James and his staff certainly do. And yet I'm also confident that, you know, they have looked at all angles on this and really pushed themselves. And they're, and I really appreciate the balanced approach they're taking in terms of there's, what are the highest priorities, you know, and that's the have seniors, you know, who have had, had anything but normalcy over the past, you know, year plus to have some normalcy as they finish their careers at GHS, you know. And then the kids who are, you know, really need some extra support to finish the year strong and to advance in whatever age they are. And that's the next highest priority. And then, and then around that is just the sense of what's the safest way to do this, you know? And, and no easy answers here, no perfect answers, but I do have a real, real confidence, as I said. James and his team have looked at all angles here and, and continue to look at all angles. And are trying to do the best they can and most kids in the safest way possible. And so I think you're doing a good job in that and it'll, it'll keep developing. So thank you, James, for everything.
Thank you, Ben. I do want to say one more thing before I part in the time I have. I'd like to give a shout out to Donna Tar, my colleague of many, many years in the special education department who is retiring at the end of the month, a little bit earlier than the end of the year. Donna is the very personification of what we call in education, a warm demander, somebody who cares so deeply and has the high expectations for kids that they then meet because of her deep caring and persistence with students. I'm going to really miss Donna and I just wanted to take a moment tonight to, to give her a shout out on her retirement. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, James. Thanks again. Ben?
Great. So let's move into the last two segments of my update. You see something that says budget update? Yes, okay, good. So, um, so the main, the main priority tonight is to show you update the whole school committee on some minor changes that have been made in the budget. You know, since, as we've been developing, you know, as we're developing over the last months. And, but I also want to take the time just to recap a few things here for the general public. And so I'm going to go over those quickly. But again, our guiding principles always want to build a budget on our strengths and our priorities for learning, support and instruction across all of our schools. Always needs to be connected to district improvement plan, which is on a variety of areas. We are not, we are building a budget for a normal year. And, and we continue to plan for a normal year. And so far, that's, that's looks like where we're headed and we'll keep our fingers crossed on that. In any year, but especially this year, because there continue to be unknowns about this year and the following year. Moderation and financial prudence are a must. You know, we can't be too ambitious when we change out of request. And so we really want to balance any increase and reductions going forward because we can't just be financially prudent always. So as you heard me say many, many times, and maybe some folks who are just tuning in haven't heard me. These are our budget priorities. These are the areas where we're trying to you know, strengthen this year through the budget. And this is where our limited number of, you know, new investments are targeted in these areas. The first three really on how do we understand how our students are learning, how do we work together to do that? How do we all work together to understand what supports our kids need because they aren't progressing or are struggling? And then how do we make sure during strengthening core instruction every single day? Every single child gets really high quality instruction. And that happens through good collaboration, that happens through great professional development. And really being very reflective on our practice. So always want to work on those three. This year, as you know, really want to begin a focus and ongoing focus on supporting. We always want to support our most vulnerable learners, but especially our English language learners, learners, they are growing at a temp. We have a growing number of students who are English language learners, 10% every year. And that's getting you a place where you really understand that we need to do more to support themselves, those students, their families to make sure they are, you know, full members of our community. And we are benefiting from the great strengths and skills and experiences that they bring to us. And they're benefiting from being a full participants in our community. Social emotional health, always very important. The committee has made really significant investments over the last number of years on this. We'll continue to use those investments wisely and not as much through the operating budget, but also through the federal dollars we'll be getting, we'll, you know, also pay attention to that. Maintain a recent investments in technology. As you know, we've added just tremendous amounts of technology which our families, I mean, sorry, our students and our staff are using very, very well and have just, you know, accelerated their understanding about how to use those tools as educational tools. And we want to make sure that we're able to support them in using those well and making sure they're working and operating properly. And then also a continually ongoing investment in our infrastructure to make sure our buildings are being well maintained, being repaired. And so they can have a good and long useful life. So that's where our target investments are focused on. Our calendar, April 28th. So just giving you an update tonight, but the school committee will vote on April 28th to submit the budget to the mayor. And then through May and into June, working with the mayor, the city council to make sure they understand what our budget is and where it stands and that they move towards a final vote on our total appropriation at the end of June. This has not changed in terms of the budget summary. I will make a, the this has changed slightly. I'll get it. That's one of the changes I'll discuss in terms of our health insurance and that percentage. You'll see, and we'll talk more about the 2.82% increase in the total budget. What will happen tonight, and I'm sort of falling in as myself, is often in school budgets, we talk about the increase. You know, the, in this case, a 2.82% increase, we focus on that. And which I, which I actually will do tonight a little bit, just on those, on those small margins there. And we often don't talk as much on the, if I have this right, the 93.18, 97.18% of the budget. You know, and it's actually most important to use that, you know, that large. You know, what our budget has been, using it that to great effect and great impact. And so in the years to come, we'll focus, you know, more on that and less on just the, just the very marginal increase that happens, you know, each year. Which is important, but again, a fraction of the total budget. So these, just to remind folks, this is where the new positions we're looking for. Again, these are tied directly to our priorities for the year, which are tied directly to the district improvement plan. You've seen all these before. One small adjustment, I'm going to ask Greg Bach to describe one change we're making as we continue to look at the budget and talk with the O'Malley leadership. We have from the beginning talked about having coaches, additional math coaches, as you know. Our coaches have been an essential piece of supporting our staff members, helping with improving our practice, helping with understanding closely how our students are progressing, not year to year, but within, you know, month to month, really. And we've had only two math coaches across our five, five elementary schools. So I've been saying from the beginning, we want to improve that. So but we thought we'd be having coaches added at elementary and middle school. We're just adjusting this slightly to two elementary math coaches at, which, which will allow each elementary school to have its own math coach. And then Greg, if you can, and then we've shifted the coach position to a little bit different position that's going to help really focus on the work we have to do on the standard improvement plan for O'Malley. So Greg's going to just describe it, just in short detail. That position and how it's going to really support the team and play integral role in the standard improvement plan.
Sure, thank you. And there still is a component of coaching. I just want to add in this. Even though there's a title of a description curriculum and instruction coordinator, there is a coaching component. But one of the things that both S R two and S R three open up opportunities for is the potential for multiple interventionists over the, at least over the next few years. And with, with those opportunities available, it's very clear that putting interventionists in a system without having really tight coordination is, is not the best, not the best approach. Also, you know, really close look at the sustainable improvement plan. There is language all throughout the plan about coordinating the multitude system of supports, about a coordinated approach for instructional improvement across the school. And the program leaders at the middle school do a great job. But it's important to know that they, they don't have extra built-in release time during the day. So there is not really often the opportunity for coordination across all subject areas. And so having a coordinator who can fill the role of coaching in a, the subject area for E L A, for example, but also has the ability and the role to look across subject areas and embed work to embed those, you know, high leverage literacy strategies across content areas in social studies and science. That person really needs to be able to move, have that time during the day and to move among departments. I think, lastly, one of the things that we want to capitalize on is we have, you know, really great, established a really great system at the elementary school. And this position would help you know, strengthen those transitions from fifth grade to sixth grade to coordinate with the coaches at the elementary schools that have been a really strong, powerful force for us. And to, you know, help carry that work into the middle school. So this is something that we have talked about in past years and even had it had in the budget a year ago. So it's with the opportunity of, of S R to really support our interventionists. It makes a lot of sense to provide the structure and the coordination to make that most effective.
Thank you very much, Greg. And again, want to, just want to highlight that because that's the only, in terms of the, the changes or the the positions we've been talking about all along, since I think, since maybe January, this is the only change that we wanted to make sure that. And that's comes from a lot of work and thinking together. Want to make sure we highlight, highlight that and explain it to, to you folks. A few more things. We won't be talking about the federal grants tonight just because, you know, they're very separate from the operating budget. But I do want to point out another change you'll see when we go, go over the changes is that we've, we shifted summer, the summer academy work and reading gaps off of the operating budget. I needed to do that because of some increases related to related to health, I'm sorry. Ladies, special education costs, but that, that's still, there's no, there's no change in the budget. Just want to, you know, you'll see that that's been shifted off of the operating budget. Again, highlighting it because it's another change. Let me show you now, and we went over this at B and F. Just wanted to show you in this document, which is in the B and F folder that was shared with you earlier in the week. But let me just highlight a few things. And this is just going to, this is where you see what the actual changes are. Let me increase this. Zoom in some. Hold on. So again, these are just some, again, tonight is about focusing on any adjustments that have been made. The first one here that circled is a $20,000 increase. That's to our audit fee and that's the essentially the cost of our auditors, meaning the city auditor who also works, also audits our accounts. The schools have not been paying our fair share of that cost to the city. And so we've agreed with them to pay $20,000 for the upcoming year. That is still not a proportional amount. Meaning our proportion of the audits work is higher than this, this $20,000 is for the total fee that's assessed, you know, that's, that the city is charged. So that, that's the difference there. Next going on, as we've had described all along. You know, our projections on the cost of health insurance, we're just at projections based on the best information at this point. John Dunn and Kenny Costa has given us the actual number. That is a savings, actually. We, we projected conservatively, which is what you typically like to do. And those costs have come in a little less. That's a pot, that's a, you know, an improvement in terms of our bottom line. But the important piece of that. Gary, I'm saying that correctly, right?
Yes.
Okay, good, good. An important piece of that, though, is that we've had increases in other areas, specifically in special education. And again, as you may remember, our special education costs can change. You know, during a budget cycle, like or during a budget development cycle, or actually during an actual school year. And as these numbers have come through, specifically, one of them is an increase from N E C on our sort of our, our district costs. So that is a significant increase in a change rather, an increase in our certification costs. And then, as I mentioned, the last change is the taking off the operating budget. And then, as I mentioned, the last change is the taking off the operating budget. The school year and summer, the, the cost to school, uh, to summer, um, work, that is, um, the reason we're doing that specifically is one of the real focus areas for the federal dollars are, targeted remediation, targeted support, uh, social emotional health, uh, summer learning and sort of stuff. So this is one area that really makes sense to, to, um, because we're doing much more robust programs in the summer. Makes sense to pull that off the operating budget. Uh, it's a short-term expenditure, uh, very focused on this summer. And those, um, balance out, all those pluses and minuses balance out. So there's no change in our bottom line. We're not requesting more dollars. Um, just we're able to make changes with, within, um, our budget that, and budget number you've already seen. So, um, let me just go through a couple more slides here and then we'll be wrapped up and folks can ask any questions they like. One second here. Here we go. Are you seeing? Sorry, one second. Good. And then the last slide here is just, um, our vision of the, um, budget summary by department. One change explanation is we had accidentally, so, so Melissa Xera asked about, uh, decline in vocational education. We realized in looking at that is actually the vocational education and athletics lineups were, were swapped. There's actually a decline in athletics. Um, Gary, can you explain, um, not as vocational education? But in athletics, Gary, can you just explain that? That's more about, um, looking at past, uh, actuals and budgeting more accurately, correct?
Yeah, that's correct. Uh, yeah, there's nothing more to add.
Me, meaning in the past, we've looked at the revolver account in athletics and what we've, and also our expense in athletics. And we budgeted more than we, than we expended. So there was always a surplus in athletics over the past number of years. I'm not sure how many years, Gary. Um, and so.
Yeah, looking, yeah, looking back three to four years, we've been, uh, the general fund has been, uh, expending about 200, a little bit over 200,000. We've been budgeting 300,000. So bringing the budget in line to actual expenditures for the athletics.
Yes, we're not reducing expenditures at athletics, just making sure the budget is more aligned with actual expenditures. So I can, um, yep, I'll stop there and, um, see if we can answer questions for the committee.
Any questions, Joel?
Thanks. Um, so this question is for the superintendent. So those coach positions have been talked about for the last several years. And the way I'm kind of reading it is that, you know, the, the previous superintendent in coordination with the staff, thought these were important. And you've kind of come with a fresh set of eyes and you seem to have agreed that these really are important. You know, can you just talk a little bit more about why, um, you've chosen for your first budget to stick with this request versus other needs you might see in the, the district?
Yeah, I think, you know, um, well, there are lots of reasons. There's, there's, there's a couple of things. A lot of evidence across many schools, across the country, that, that, and, and an embedded approach to, you know, working with educators and educators working together to, you know, analyze, reflect on, um, you know, student learning together. And then, and, and from that reflection and analysis, then, um, you know, identify what kids need to, to, you know, to keep improving, where they're struggling, what additional challenge they need, they need. And that's really, really hard for any group of teachers, a grade level team, a department team, you know, to do on their own. You know, to organize, to facilitate, because, you know, as folks know, I mean, a teacher's job is so many facets and it's, and it's so go, go, go. That really important, um, you know, um, uh, I would say is practice of reflection, analysis, teachers do it on their own a lot. Um, and they can, and they do it together, but having someone who's helping to organize that, you know, with them, helping to put materials together, helping to get resources. So that's one area that's really important. Um, and then as Greg mentioned, and this is helped at the elementary schools, and now we'll have more capacity at the, at the, at the middle school is how do you organize that system of supports? You know, it's the sort of, you know, timing, scheduling, um, human resources. How do you allocate, how do you plan that, schedule that and, and then follow up? You know, to make sure it's being done. And that's provided by a pair of professionals that can be provided by teachers, but organizing it is no small feat. So that's another piece. I mean, then also, um, our coaches have, have made, have played a really important role in our school-based professional development. Again, something hard for a principal alone on his or her own to do well because of the, their incredible, you know, number of facets of their position as well. So if you don't apply, um, the resources, human and otherwise, you know, professional and otherwise, to, uh, closely analyze how our students are doing and understand it, to, uh, organize and build curriculum over time, um, you keep doing the same things. And, um, the most important piece here of that process is that, um, any coach knows doing it, um, with colleague, with their colleagues, you know, their, their, their classroom colleagues, um, not doing it to them, not doing it around them, but building a collaborative culture that's always focused on sustaining improvement in practice, in learning, in engagement, in support, that sort of stuff. And, and that just can't be done in schools, very, very hard to do that in schools. Just by asking teachers to do more of it in their very, very limited time. And, uh, tremendous track record of doing it, um, this, the, 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 the schools here and all the huge, I, I mean, I, I wouldn't say huge because I haven't been here, but my sense of what I've learned here is great progress on curriculum, instruction, assessment, supportive students over the last number of years. Is because we have a systematic approach to do it to that collaboration. And that's just, uh, can't be done on its own, honestly. It doesn't happen, happen by magic. You need time and resources and people to help organize that and make sure that, um, helping, helping folks to work together on that.
Thank you.
Laura.
Just a quick question on those positions. Are those S R grant positions? Or are those going to be from the operating budget?
Yeah. So I want, that's a great question. Thank you for coming in. Nothing I've shown you tonight. I know I mentioned the summer school, the summer. But nothing I've shown you tonight is S R. I, I really want to separate these two, uh, funding sources out, um, very, very clearly. And we all need to, not only this year, but going over the next couple of years. We're only talking about tonight with this, this city's allocation to the schools for our operating budget. Okay, that's, that's the, uh, you know, dollars we can essentially, I wouldn't say count on, but you know, um, each year, because it goes up and down, obviously. The S R dollars, the federal dollars are short-term. They're going to be a couple of years, maybe a little bit more. But that money will go away. So if, if there are things that we want to maintain our budget on the long-term positions, programs, that sort of thing, um, they have got to be into, in our operating budget. As we add supports or positions funded by federal gun, uh, grants or other grants in, you know, in the, in the coming, you know, year plus, we have to be very conscious, all of us, that those are short-term positions that will go away. So, and then you'll see more about that. It'll be focused on, um, intervention, social emotional support, um, mental health. It'll be focused on summer. Um, it'll be, and that'll be, um, you know, uh, really sort of, um, addressing the, uh, challenges, the struggles that our students continue to face, um, uh, and will face for the upcoming years. But those will be very sort of, um, uh, you know, just specifically focused on those. But we will work with you and share with you, um, some of the details. I shared one, the first sort of version of S R two, uh, with B N F on, on, um, on Monday, but didn't want to complicate and confuse the issue tonight because these are very, very separate pots of money with real separate rules and, and separate timeframes.
That was my understanding and I did watch that meeting. I just, I thought that that slide in that spot did say S R. So I don't have it in front of me, but, um, I just.
So I, I, I did share that, but I'm, I did share that, that, okay, you're the first of S R on Monday. I'm not doing it tonight because this is leading up to your vote on the operating budget alone, not on S R.
Right. No, I just thought in the slide you showed us tonight, but I could be mistaken. Thank you.
Yeah, the, the only thing I showed, I think that had really focused on S R was, um, the summer, the summer school dollars.
Okay, thanks.
Melissa and then Sam.
Thank you. Um, Ben, do you foresee any issues with hiring? I mean, these positions sound great. And I, I want to get excited about it, but the reality is over the past year, we've had a struggle hiring people. What is the plan? What is the marketing plan to get these positions filled? You know, do you intend to put them out as soon as possible to advertise on school spring or whatever it is that we do? But I mean, there's no doubt we need the support. I'm just not so confident that we're going to get the positions filled.
Yeah, um, uh, I, we had, um, so, so always worry about filling positions with the right people, you know, good experience, talented, you know, um, you know, hardworking, problem-solving oriented folks, always a challenge, right? To get the right people. That's the most, most important work is get the right people in the right places, right? Having said that, you know, I can't think of a more difficult hiring environment than last summer and fall. I mean, I just can't imagine one. I, okay, I could be wrong, but, and we had to hire on a very short timeframe. Because, you know, you know, appropriately, a number of our staff needed to take leaves, right? Or they need to work in a remote, remote academy, totally great, right? But we had to, of course, backfill and replace many of those folks, especially the, obviously the teachers we had to. Many of the folks we hired, not all, but many of the folks we hired, had, were just fantastic, you know? Folks we want to, you know, if we can keep on long-term. The only reason I'm saying that is in the most difficult time, we were able to hire just some fantastic people, you know? So that gives me hope that there's a draw to Gloucester, that there's, um, people who want to, you know, work here. And I think the most difficult challenge we'll have in hiring, and this may be this year upcoming, is how do we hire folks, you know, um, from diverse backgrounds and diverse cultures, you know? And that's not necessarily right now or the pandemic, that's going to be an ongoing challenge, you know? We are advertising actively for the K to eight family liaison, you know, who we want to be bilingual because of our, you know, our, you know, our, our, our community. Um, and that's been challenging. Um, but what I, what I always say is, you know, you know, you want to have a, a long enough timeframe, so you can have a process that if it doesn't work the first time, it hopefully worked the second time or the third time. You know, and so we, we are advertising for some of these positions. We're advertising for the positions we know. So if there's retirement or someone's not returning, we're already advertising for those positions, more, more job postings go up almost every day. For some of these, we haven't, we're not posting yet. Some of them we are posting and it's anticipated. You know, it's very clearly listed as, and you know, funding anticipated. You know, we can't get ahead of, ahead of the, the, you know, the process here, but we can certainly post positions to get resumes and start the process. As long as the folks who are applying understand where we are in the budget process. So we're not delaying. We want to move on this and we want to find the right, the best people.
Good to hear. Thank you.
Samantha.
Thank you. Um, so I think Laura maybe saw what I saw. There was an adjustment position, adjustment counselor position that said funded by S R two. Is that for the summer program? Or was that just like?
Sure. So I think, I mean, let me just, I just want to make sure that. Oh, yeah, yeah. Thank you. Yeah. Good. Thank, good catch. Yeah. So a, as I mentioned about summer and we'll have interventions and we'll have, um, uh, additional support, social emotional support funded by S R two. That is one of the things, adjustment counselor, that we will fund by S R two, um, at the elementary level. Yeah. So that's, yeah. And so that's, that's when I, when I show, when I, when I present more details, perhaps at our next meeting, um, about that, you'll see that all the, the S R two funding is tied to very, you know, more specific, uh, pandemic-related supports. You know, um, or making up for things we weren't able to do this year, or kids are being affected by. Um, adjustment counseling in this case being one of them. So yeah, absolutely. That'll be funded from, uh, by S R two, um, this year. And then, um, uh, probably the next year as well. We're thinking of that as, we're thinking of that, that position, that position specifically is a two-year position.
Okay. Jonathan, I have one other comment. Can I?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Um, just in relation to hiring, um, particularly more diverse staff. I, I felt like it was important just to acknowledge that this is sort of an issue that we're learning about in, uh, the stakeholder group that across the city is having just sort of a really difficult time hiring and recruiting more diverse staff, particularly staff who speak multiple languages. So it is a topic that we're talking about in the stakeholder group. Um, and I do think it's just important for us to acknowledge that it's not just us, but it is important. It's a goal of ours. Um, and it's something that the city as a whole, all of the organizations that are involved in the stakeholder group are really actively trying to figure out how to better, um, recruit and retain, particularly people who speak multiple languages.
Absolutely. And, and yeah, absolutely.
Any other questions on the budget? Seeing none, Ben, you want to move on to the evaluation, your, your evaluation process?
Sure.
Jonathan, do you want to wait till action to move that change in budget?
Oh.
Okay, uh, we'll, we're going to vote the budget next, at our next meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep, sorry.
Okay.
All right. So you should see, do you see the timeline? Great. Okay. So, uh, just to go over this, you, you folks will talk about this more, um, as we go forward, but just want to give you a heads up on where we go from here. So week of May 10th, uh, you, of course, will remember that the committee reviewed, um, and gave feedback and, um, and then ultimately accepted my, um, goals for the year. I'll provide goals, uh, the goals again, obviously, uh, evidence towards accomplishing those goals and, and the, uh, D E S I rubric, which you use. Week of May 10th, uh, the school committee members, um, and just so you know, I worked, Jonathan and I talked this through. This just isn't my plan. Okay. Um, but this is, um, I'm just sort of speaking through it. But Jonathan, you should chime in and feel free to add. The members will have two weeks to individually review that evidence and then complete the evaluation rubric. You'll discuss the process and check in on progress on the 20th, May 26th school committee meeting. Uh, May 28th, again, that's when those are, uh, so your individual evaluations are, are due to Jonathan. One of his roles is to, or one of his role, his primary role in this is to, um, take all those and complete a written summary report that he distributes to, uh, to the rest of the school committee. Uh, that'll happen by June 7th. And then, and June 9th, um, the, uh, in the public meeting, uh, the committee will discuss the chair's report as a regular business item, um, and, uh, and, and go through the evaluation, uh, my, my work this year. So, um, any questions about that? And you'll have time to keep discussing it as we go forward.
Yeah, it's really just setting out the timeline at this point. Laura and, and Samantha have never done this before and, and, um, certainly will have many questions as we, as we go get into it, but, um, for now, it's just, we're just talking about the timeline. Okay.
All right. Um, so I think that's, uh, that's all in terms of, um, that substantial agenda item.
So we'll move on to, uh, committee reports and, um, the, um, only one is the, um, building and finance subcommittee meeting, um, of last Monday. And I'll hand it over to Kathy to give us, uh, a summation, although the, the budget has already been presented. That was a part of, a, a big part of what we did. There were a few other things.
Right. Right. So I'm going to begin with the things that are a little more straightforward and, uh, shorter. So we went over the fiscal year 2021 budget update, this current fiscal year, and we continue to be, um, under budget. Primarily due to, um, a continuation of things like lower substitute costs because it's hard to find substitutes in practically every category of staff. Um, so those are savings. And so right now we have, uh, are, are anticipated to end the year with about an $800,000, um, balance that we will likely put towards prepay special education. But we can also discuss if there are other one-time things that we might want to consider. But we do know that, you know, special education continues to be an evolving piece of, of the budget with, um, you know, move-ins and, and, you know, different, different student situations. So we just keep an eye on that every month as we lead towards June. To determine what the prepay is and any, any other things we may want to do. We talked about, um, we had Anna Mayo from transportation. We talked about, um, We talked about, we had Adam Mayo from transportation, we talked about, you know, bus fees. Currently, the fact that they're at $100, we talked about what it would look like to waive bus fees or not have a bus fee going forward and the need for information to basically evaluate that from a financial perspective. Currently, we have about $24,000 in revenue, not this fiscal year because there were no fees this year, but last fiscal year. So in terms of lost revenue, it would be about 24,000. But we also want to know what incremental cost might be if more people are putting their child on the bus and what does that look like in terms of cost of buses and staff? So we discussed Adam possibly doing a quick survey to families. You know, if there's no fee or, you know, what about next year, will you put your child on the bus? We talked about, um, all those situations. So, so more to come on that. We'll continue working with all the details on that. So next month we'll have another report with more information. We spent a lot of time, thankfully, we had Mike Hale from the D P W, the director, and it was terrific to have him there. We, we talked about capital projects and some of the major repair kind of projects we have. The current projects that are going to be happening this summer are the security entrances, you know, the renovation to do, improve security both at Gloucester High School and O'Malley. And we've been talking about this for at least a, you know, few years. And this is the summer where the, that work will happen. Each one has been, it's about a million dollars each financed through a city bond. So we're glad that those projects are going to happen because, you know, those buildings do not have the double entry. I know at O'Malley and at the high school, both, there's no clear site to the entryway. So these will be important improvements made to, made to both those schools this summer. And then, of course, we, the other ongoing is our new combined school, which is quite exciting. And Ben's going to help me a little bit on some of the other significant needs. We have been hearing as a committee from Mike Hale, year after year after year, that the thing that keeps him up at night are our modulars. And so he, Ben and he highlighted the condition of modulars at both Beaman and Plum Cove because those are the schools that will be replaced, you know, further out, probably on a 10-year timeframe. So, um, so we wanted to start gathering information. We wanted, um, Mike and Ben to start gathering that information. What does it look like? How would it be funded? Is there anything else on that, Ben?
Yeah, not too much. Um, you know, just spoke to John Dunn to make sure he knew, to, you know, just recently, this week about, you know, making sure he understands that, you know, that I updated the committee on this, that there's interest and there's a need which he's aware about. And so we'll be working with Mike, um, on, on a timeframe. You know, the earliest this could possibly be done and that may be too ambitious would be next summer. They can be replaced in the summer as long as we stick to the current foundation, you know, the, the footprint, which I think we want to do, but, um, if you expand either, at either site, Beaman or Plum Cove, and, you know, needing additional, you know, temporary modular space, then you get into something that's quite a bit more complicated. But because the foundation's already there, it's, um, an easier project than it would be to install them initially. But so we, you know, want to move forward on that and then we'll come back to the committee, both B and F and the full committee with a, um, you know, timeline, process, cost, that sort of stuff to make, so we can make a decision, then, then get on a real, you know, timeline and path towards, towards replacement. That'll also involve, um, just, uh, you know, talking about, you know, financing and funding and, you know, the long-term, you know, you know, what, what's the timeframe on Beaman and Plum Cove on consolidation and rebuilding those? Because that obviously plays into this too. So, and we might have some more information on that as well.
No. Um, the other need that is out there is O'Malley, which has single pane windows. Clearly there are any energy efficiency issues and improve, you know, kind of comfort for, for both staff and students. So that is going to be submitted with a statement of interest to the MSBA accelerated repair program. The due date for those is June 1st this year. And sometimes it takes more than a year to get accepted into that program because they, there's a limited amount of funds. That is how we've done the roofs at all of our schools many years ago, it seems like many years ago, and also more recent, they helped with some windows, I believe, for funding at the high school. So we're happy that this is another MSBA program that provides funding for schools to help with infrastructure needs like this. Another item mentioned is the transportation barn for the bus. And we would work with the city to see if there's any way, you know, that, that could be combined with a need that they may have. So that's, you know, kind of a long-term horizon. But the items on the list of capital projects, you know, I must say that this year and last year were kind of two years where we finally could talk about capital projects and they might possibly happen and get funded, which has been terrific because, you know, we have a new gym floor in the fieldhouse and, and we've done some really important repair work in terms of heating and, and all that. And so we're continuing with just this long-term plan and hopefully being more thoughtful about how the funding happens and working with John Dunn and of course, the mayor on these things. The next topic we talked about was to Blackburn, which is where the preschool is and what the future of that is. Whether we buy or continue to lease or what the future of where the preschool would be. Well, Ben is going to talk to John Dunn about what that might look like. But that's the big discussion.
And one, one of the pieces on that, which I just, we really referenced, did not show B and F, but is to, Doran Riddier helped out with a, just from looking at a presentation, an old presentation, a pretty substantial analysis of different options about, you know, you know, if you purchase the two Blackburn building, if you move preschool to O'Malley or the high school, if you move district office there, you know, and, and need to dig into that further, I need to understand it more, but also then bring it to the committee because obviously there's been change in the committee and not sure that it was ever, that was ever fully analyzed. But that, that's helpful information on what our options might be. And then also, and then, and really don't want, I, I, what I want to do is work with the committee to lead a process where we, you know, come to final, final agreement or, you know, action or no action on, on this, on the, you know, preschool in this building and, you know, whether, and just sort of put to, put to rest finally whether or not the, the city's going to act on it or not. That'll take a little while. Like I said, one of the steps is, is understanding the information we have, understanding the available spaces at O'Malley and, 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 and the high school. That door where your report will help us look at that closely. And then also just the acknowledging that there's some needs at the preschool building. The playground is out of date and, and not appropriate in terms of accessibility. And the carpeting is an issue, has been an issue and isn't really, you know, appropriate for a middle school classroom. So, but those are significant, will be significant capital outlays that, you know, we, we likely don't want to put into a building we, we are leasing, or if we do, you know, we want to do that very thoughtfully and, and, and then go in with open eyes, you know, to do that, but it's something we shouldn't take lightly. So that's just, um, saying that it's something that, you know, want to really now begin a, you know, a process to coming to final conclusion on what to do about long-term with the preschool and the district office.
Yeah. Um, okay. There's going to be work this summer going on at the O'Malley Science Center to install sinks and take down a wall. They've really re-envisioned how those spaces work together to maximize student experience, to maximize as much curriculum. It kind of aligns with some new thoughts on curriculum that they want to, that they, they want to deliver and I think have been trying to deliver this year. So it's a, just a better utilization. This, if you'll remember, GF provided a grant for some of this, some of this work. So we're glad that that's going to happen over the summer. So kids will walk into O'Malley in the fall and have, you know, kind of an even better science area. Big items at Gloucester High School in O'Malley are replacing the grease traps in the kitchens. Not a really attractive topic, but a very necessary topic for our kitchen staff and for the functioning of how we do first service. And that's a, that's a capital estimate of about $100,000. So, um, so that's a big one, but also very important one. Beaman needs some paving in the courtyard and the back parking lot. I think we've been hearing about this for at least a couple of years that, you know, there's just a lot of cracks in the pavement and, and things that make it unsafe for kids. And so we're hoping that that's something that the DPW will be taking care of. I don't recall if he said that this would be this summer. Do you remember?
What DPW is aiming for, we would like to, you know, as soon as possible, meaning this summer. That, that's not definite yet, but still working through it.
Right, right. Another item is de-escalation space within a classroom at West Parish. Plum Cove hallway flooring, Beaman update the teacher's lunchroom. Gloucester High School replace lockers. And I know we've, in the past, there's been years where some lockers were replaced. So this is kind of a phased approach, and I believe this is the last group of lockers that need to be replaced. If you've been and you've noticed Gloucester High School, they still have the really skinny lockers where no one uses the really skinny lockers because you can't do anything except put some books on the ground straight up and down, but no backpack. So it'd be great to, to finish that. Oh, we have a much, there's, anyway, there's, so you guys all have, there's a long list after that of, of smaller things like painting, ceiling tiles, maintenance on the gym floor, all those things are in the packet from the B and F. So I encourage you both to look through those documents if you haven't already done so and, and watch the, watch the meeting for this section because it's kind of important. There's just a lot of things that, that are on the list. There's also a furniture and furnishings list of, of needed items like student desks and chairs, which will come from S R funding, cafeteria tables, desk chairs, waiting room seating at Gloucester High School, blinds for O'Malley, conference room chairs. So, so there's a, you know, there's definitely a lot of things on here that are needed. And, you know, some of them have funding attached through the grants and some will be part of what we need to plan for over the next couple of years to make sure we get things in. And that is the B and F report.
Okay. Anything else on that? No other committee reports, we'll move on to action. And we have a number of items here. We have a number of Gloucester Education Foundation grants. I will read them all off and then I'll entertain a motion to accept them all. The Geodes phonics books, $11,085 to East Gloucester Elementary School. Digital photo lab upgrade, $23,734 to Gloucester High School. Gordon Summer Engineering Camp, $30,000 to elementary schools. Note, this is the second installment of a $90,000 pledge. The first installment of $30,000 was to improve, was approved by the school committee on done. January 13th of 21. O'Malley 3D printers, $6,369.50. Gloucester High School Robotics and Engineering 3D printers, $7,274.43. The O'Malley Science Center, $6,000 provided by Mr. Dick Wilson in memory of his wife Barbara. And I believe that money will be used to provide an intern from, in the Science Center. And the O'Malley Band Instruction for $4,000. And that, once again, is the Gloucester Education Foundation just doing everything they can to support students in Gloucester. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Is there any discussion?
Continued thanks to GF always.
Sorry, is this just to accept the committee report because I got kicked off?
What?
We're accepting grants.
We're, 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 we're in the process of approving the Gloucester Education Foundation grants.
Great. Sorry, I got kicked off. So I just wanted to make sure I knew what was happening.
Okay. So we've just read them all off and it's been moved and seconded to accept them all as a package. And Kathy? You're muted.
I just wanted to be, to clarify, the, the agenda says the first 30,000 was to G H S, but we corrected that at a later meeting that it's to the elementary schools. So just so that the record is correct, the both installments are for elementary schools.
Okay. Great. Anything else? We have a motion and a second. Maria, could we have a roll call vote?
Ms. Weeson?
Yes.
Kathy Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Favazza?
Yes.
Chairman Pope?
Yes.
Ms. Prince?
Yes.
Mayor Taken?
Yes.
And Ms. Watson?
Yes.
Okay, it passes unanimously. I hope the day never comes where we start to take the Gloucester Education Foundation for granted. This is their absolutely phenomenal organization that is, and we just read off the list, provides so much that we would not have, that, that with the school department would not be able to provide any of these things were it not for them. So, and all the people that contribute to the Gloucester Education Foundation, as well as the people who are on the board, the different boards and, and are so active in soliciting funds and distributing them to our, our teachers mostly and on occasion a student. Okay?
Thank you. Just quickly, I just want to chime in on that. The GF had its annual meeting earlier this week and again, with all their, their support, many supporters on there, not all of them, obviously, but many. And they also did a fantastic job of having three of our teachers and also one student there to describe some of the work that's been, that is happening and happening in our schools and happening outside of our schools because of GF. And it just was a fantastic chance for some of our really talented staff and one of our students, Mila Berry, to just highlight and, and communicate and really sort of publicize some fantastic work that's happening in conjunction with GF. So just so, so agree with you in terms of their generosity, their commitment, and there's a lot of hard work to support our schools from GF.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to Department of Elementary and Secondary Education Grant. And it's for FY 20, FY 21. It's the fund code 115 S R two, and it is for $1,975,620.
I'll move to accept. Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none. Could we have a roll call vote, Maria?
Ms. Weeson?
Yes.
Kathy Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Favazza?
Yes.
Chairman Pope?
Yes.
Ms. Prince?
Yes.
Mayor Taken?
Yes.
And Ms. Watson?
Yes.
Thank you very much. It passes unanimously. And that concludes our, our grants. Now we, uh, we want to approve the tentative agreement between Massachusetts Nurses Association and the Gloucester School Committee effective September 1st, 2019 to August 31st, 2021. And I so move. And I so move.
Second.
As you remember, we, we have gone through this in executive session and voted there. And this is, it has been ratified by the nurses and it's time for us to vote in public. So is there any discussion?
Jonathan, do you want me to give any details to it or?
Sure, if you'd like to.
Well, just from a high level, there's not, not much that has changed other than salary and one new clause. So we have been negotiating this contract for a couple of years. COVID kind of got in the way. So we were able to capture two thousand and nineteen with the recent conversations that we've had. So we've done a two percent salary increase effective two thousand nineteen, September first. And then another two point two five effective this year. We got some language to change a date on when purchases and receipts had to be submitted. What we did do for this group, which is good news, is that we created a sick bank that will allow their employees to access that time. When they need that time. So that's, that's it from a high level.
Any, any further discussion? Okay, Maria, could we have a roll call vote?
Ms. Weason.
Yes.
Kathy Clancy.
Yes.
Mr. Favazza.
Yes.
Chairman Pope.
Yes.
Ms. Prince.
Yes.
Mayor Taken.
Present.
And Ms. Watson.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Carrie saw six in favor, one present. And we'll move on to our, the East Gloucester Veterans Memorial School Building Committee update. Not sure there's too much has changed. Ben?
No, the only real update that I can think of is, Mr. Favazza could give this update too, was last night. President Fusco and I, and I held a forum for veterans' families to give them an update on the project. And most specifically, as relevant to them, the transition over to St. Anne's, as well attended, I think about twenty-four. You know, family members from the veterans' community. And we gave an update both on the, on the design, but also really focused in on. The transition to St. Anne's. We had three parents from West Parish who, you know, were, were there. Whose children did West Parish at St. Anne's a number of years, five, six, seven years ago. And, and they were just great. They were really helpful in just telling the veterans' parents how, how it went for their kids. They had asked their children what they remember most and what they, what were the best memories from there. But they were, I think it was just nice to have, connect those West Parish parents with the veterans' parents. And I think it was all, had a few questions from, from the crowd. And just, you know, one more step as we move forward with, with the transition, with, you know, with the building project and the. And on supporting veterans and moving over to St. Anne's. So Joel, I'm not sure if you have anything to add to that. You are.
No, I thought it went well. I thought it was, I thought there were some good questions asked. And again, just the kind of scuttlebutt in the afterward was, it was appreciated that you guys took this step.
Great, good, thank you.
Okay, there's nothing much else that you haven't already heard about the progress on the building.
Oh, I'm sorry. One more thing, our crack communications group is doing a very good job of keeping the, the building private website up to date. So I really appreciate their help and support on that. Yeah, that's all.
All right. Is there anything else that anybody would like to bring up before we adjourn? Kathy?
Yes, I can't remember when Melissa mentioned this, but she had an, I thought a really good idea of recognizing retirements. And given that we are moving into the season where, you know, we don't want some of our teachers to leave, but we want to wish them well as they do. I would like to make sure that we do, do that. It would be nice if we had, you know, a letter or some, some recognition. For all they've done for our students in our schools that, you know, maybe we sign or, or something. But I just want something, you know, I thought that was a great idea that we should take advantage of.
Yes, we should. Do we have a, a list of retiring teachers, Ben?
I don't personally, but our human resources department definitely does. So we can, we can work on putting that together for the committee and seeing what we can do to acknowledge their service. And, and their bright futures.
Yes. Melissa, oh, sorry.
Well, just on that, James mentioned one person as well for this month. So I'd love to get that one.
Jonathan, I thought we did that last year. I did it to all of them that retired. I thought we did that. I thought you sent the same thing that you kind of copied of something like what the city does with the.
Yeah, that last year at this time is sort of a blur. We might have, I, I think, I know.
Yeah, well, I, I know I did. I know that every year I get a list and I send out citations to them. It used to be, they used to have like a little gathering or retirement party and we'd go and give it. But last year we sent them out and this year hopefully we'll be able, I know they're doing a little bit, something for Mrs. Tar too. At the end of the month, so yeah, I do citations.
Melissa?
It might be helpful to recognize them under recognitions. I mean, that's what I did on the other committee whenever somebody retired. It's almost, we almost took a vote to accept the retirement, just to give them that recognition and say their name. And, and let the community know that we do respect the work that retirees have done in our district and wish them well, like we said. But I raised my hand on a different topic.
Yeah, but just, I wanted to say also retirees, you have Ed Berkman who started off at the school, remember when the janitors worked for the school? And he has thirty years between school and city because they switched over and he retired too. So during this COVID, I think we missed a lot of janitors or, or teachers or, and so maybe we could get back and forth to human resources. And combine and do something and mail, at least mail it out to them and acknowledge, I mean, thirty years is thirty years, you know, just like Mr. Tar. I mean, that's a lot of commitment and a lot of different changes. So we thank everyone. Whether you're here for a day or thirty years, but thirty years is, is just like a lot.
I'm creeping up on that at my.
I know, I'm twenty, so.
It'll be thirty years, it's scary. So Jonathan, what I would like to have some action on is. When, when and how are we going to decide to name the new school?
Well, the process that we have in our policy is that the naming committee consists of the. Chairs of the three subcommittees. Okay, and it's up to them, but that's as far as it goes. It's up to them to decide what the process is going to be. So I, I would suggest that they. The one, whichever chair has the, the most seniority, become the chair of the naming committee. And, and organize a meeting and have a discussion about the process of how you want to move forward.
Okay, I think that's a good idea. I did, I was on a committee when we did this at the tech.
Yeah.
There's a lot of outreach we can do so that everyone's involved, you know, it's not just the, the three chairs.
Oh, no, I, I think.
You think it's you, Melissa, to like tag you're it, if you want to set that meeting up.
Sounds like it. So anyway, okay, so I just want to get that process going because I think it's important. Jonathan, you're leaving. Joel, you've announced you're leaving. I mean, I would want this group to, to make that decision, you know? So before we know it, it's going to be the end of the year with election season coming. So I just think it would be great to get that process going so that we can all have our voices heard in that decision.
So I would respectfully, so I understand about the election, like totally a hundred percent, okay? And I'm hoping Joel and, and, and Jonathan keep, keep voting all the way through December, okay? And I think that is the plan, right?
Right.
But I would respectfully like the, I hope the, the group can consider not doing that this spring. Okay, there is a lot going on and we are hanging on. And that's, that's, you know, can be a, it needs to be an inclusive, you know, process. With the, with the school community and, and can be, sorry, I just put that out there as gently as I can.
Right, so, so Ben, that's the point. I mean, this, this is a process that's going to take some time. So meeting to start the conversation of what that process could look like. We all brainstorm on bringing the community together to make that decision. I mean, the decision wouldn't be made this spring. We just, it's going to take us a little bit to decide a process that we're all comfortable with.
Great.
Yeah, and I think that could probably be done without taxing staff more. It's probably something that we can actually handle internally as far as just coming up with process. Not necessarily decision, you know?
And when is the fresh shovel going in the grounds? Because I can't wait.
Well. I don't know.
When's it scheduled?
There has not been a groundbreaking ceremony. Date set at this point, and there will be. But the, I, the, the date right now is that the, we'll be out of the building. All of the furniture, everything moved out by what, the end of July?
Yes.
So at that point, they'll start talking about demolition and, and so it'll be after the, after. August first, I don't know.
Yeah, so demolition will probably, there's a lot of site work or prep work, prep work has to happen for, before you get to demolition. And that'll happen in August, September. So demolition probably begins sometime, you know, early fall, midfall, that sort of thing. I'm not sure when, but you know, the shovel in the ground, does that happen after demolition or before?
I, when we did it for West Parish. Some of the site work had actually been done. And it was, we actually, and we did it when school was in session. And we brought a bus full of students over from St. Anne's. From West Parish, West Parish kids from St. Anne's. And had a bit of a ceremony and it was actually quite nice. So, I mean, we, we could put some thought into how we want to do that, but I think it's.
And I ask because it would be great if we could come to some sort of conclusion or narrow down what, where we're going with the name by the time that happens. You know, so that's, that is months away, but I think it's going to take us months to, to come to a decision and a process to get to that decision.
I mean, the parody, task school's not good enough when you have a library and a gym. Got a lot of things you can name. And the process is right, Joel says, you know, bring it out to the community, you ask how you want to do it. I mean, there's so, unless somebody wants to come up with forty million dollars, they can name this school after them.
Okay.
You never know.
You never know. Anything else before we adjourn? Do we have a motion?
Self-moved. Second.
Okay, Maria, could we have a roll call vote?
Ms. Weason.
Yes, good night.
Kathy Clancy.
Yes.
Mr. Favazza.
Yes.
Chairman Pope.
Yes.
Ms. Prince.
Yes, good night, everyone.
Mayor Taken.
What a pleasure.
And Ms. Watson.
Yes.
Okay, good night, everybody. The meeting is adjourned and thank you all for your participation.